Yes.
Yes.
Mm hmm.
Okay, everybody hear us?
All right, we're good.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you everybody for their participation. We've got us work in front of us today and some good news and a lot of challenges, challenges going forward. So let's just start out, go around the room, see who was here and we'll get this started. Joe, you want to kick us out?
Sure. Joe Chloe, President, Board Member on the Motion Board.
Bruce St. John, Board Trustee.
Van Ray, Forward.
Justin Brooks, National Conservancy.
Alex Pogbo, Secretary of State's Office.
Bill Kincaid, House Representatives.
There, Man, in Danny Carroll's Office.
Taylor Russell, DFA.
Ricky Flatt, Outdoor Stewardship.
Matt Lipscomb, Board.
Those on the call.
Denny Terrell, Board.
David Hallen, Board.
Colin Maloney, Board.
Wade Hinton with Mississippi Secretary of State.
Liz Boland with DFA.
Patrick Vowell, Represent Nick Abbott, Mississippi Soil and Water Conservation Commission.
Justin Pierce, DFA.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you all. Appreciate your participation today. Everybody should have got a copy of the minutes that were sent out last Friday or so. Have any changes or corrections to those minutes? Do we have a motion to accept those notes?
So moved.
Matt gives a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Drew. And next item up is our agenda for today, March the 6th. We need approval of that. Do we have a motion to accept that agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, second.
Second.
Second by Drew. Okay. Ricky, I'll let you get us up to speed on where we are. Everybody should have gotten a copy of the maps with the distribution on it, a copy of the applications that we received through the 28th. So if you'll catch up to speed and then we'll, and we'll try to figure out a process to go through to work our way through this.
All right. Thank you. If I, if I said at last board meeting that the boat was loaded, it's really loaded now. We had a huge influx of applications the last two days of the application period that ended February 28th. We now have a total of 105 applications for stewardship trust funds. Those applications are spread out fairly well across the state. Y'all have a map that I attached to your emails last week that show where those applications land within the state, in particular interest to the congressional districts. And of those 105 applications, the total funds requested was basically $50.7 million. The project costs totals were 121.2 million and the matching funds availability on those 105 projects was 63.2 million. That's an overall match of one to 1.25. That's if you're considering all 105 applications. Now, some of these applications are more involved than others. Some of these applications will encompass more than one congressional district because they involve either statewide projects or they may involve multiple counties and may actually spread across congressional districts and that is reflected in that map. This brought us to the point where the board was probably overwhelmed by the number of applications that came in there in the last couple of days. So y'all obviously didn't have enough time to get across all those score sheets by our projected deadline of August, excuse me, March 3rd, which was been last Thursday. So called Van and discussed this situation because this was kind of new news to everyone, how many applications come in. So that kind of brought us to here where I think we were hoping to get in here and start discussing scores and evaluation of the averages among the board members as far as those score sheets go, but we're not there because you obviously hadn't had time to get across all those score sheets. And so from there, I think it was decided that we just need to get together and maybe reconsider a plan for going forward to getting those score sheets accomplished and then getting us to the point where we can make some decisions about which project should be awarded. So with that, I'll leave it to you, Van.
I think, I know Denny sent out an email and we conversed back and forth and I may have sent out an email as well about this process and procedures, but there are several things in here I think we need to decide before we get into the process. And just to give you an example, like you mentioned it earlier, incomplete applications, those that do not qualify. Some other things that would cause us to pause on those before we go forward. And that way our work may be a little simpler going into that process.
Yeah, we didn't have to score those because we've been scoring everything, you know, regardless of we thought it qualified or not. A lot of times it don't play a qualifier, so I kind of maybe we still had scored. So if you could let us know which ones we don't need to score with 105 of them, that sure helps.
Yeah, and I think if we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna set those aside, we need to have a solution for what to do with them, how they get back into the process or how they go out of the process. So, so we can get, you can give them an answer as to what we need to do. Question.
It would seem to me that one of our priorities should be, once we evaluate the incomplete information and put those in a separate file, evaluate what's our highest match, prioritize those. Because of the 105 applications, for instance, I see you have 29 indicated and then you have 24, 22 listed in the back here. So obviously those are the ones that shoot the highest match. So I would think that would be the natural qualifier for priority.
There's quite a few of them. There were 75, 25 matches.
Right. It gets us more bang for our buck quicker.
Right. And that, and so those projects are summarized in your spreadsheet towards the very end. They're highlighted in that blue frame. Those show a summary of those projects, what they are, what their request is and what the match is. I think some of those range anywhere from one to 14.4 match to maybe one, one and two. Actually one to one and a half. And there are other projects that will have a one to one match, but because I wanted to try and highlight those with the greatest potential there. Those are the ones I drew out. And, and you're right.
May assume those are indicated by.
Yes, those are indicated here. And the reason why the numbers add up probably higher than 22 is because some of them do overreach into other congressional districts. So incidentally, as I mentioned in your email, if you just look at those 22 projects that have the highest matching funds, it totals up to $9.6 million. And there's really only about $9.8 million available in funding once you've taken our operating funds out of the 10 million. So it's kind of interesting that those top 22 hit really close to what's available to use.
Let me ask you a question about those, those 22. Were they generally fully complete?
Yes. And I could go back and look over them really close again, but for the most part, all of those are fairly involved applications. I don't see any that strike me as anything that I noted any deficiencies on.
They all qualified, you think?
Mm hmm.
Looks like it, yeah.
That's the 22?
Yes.
Okay.
So they appear to equate pretty, pretty well with numbers. So all congressional districts are represented about on the same scale.
Right. When you consider the land mass of what's involved, I think it's good scale there. And.
Great start.
The other thing about that that I noticed, you know, the public's not going to necessarily care about the congressional districts, but they might talk about on my area of the state. But if you notice in the, this congressional district here, even though it's the lowest one, the highest areas, a lot of this in number 10, some of those are up north. Some people in the north part of the state, well, so they did this for me in the northern part of the state. So it may not be as imbalanced as it looks either.
Right. It's no impact for him.
Yeah.
Another layer, I mean, all that makes a lot of sense to try to get the largest match possible. Some of it, looking through at a couple of them, very few of them are a fairly large request that serve very, very few people. You know, I don't, I don't know that I'm for spending a thousand dollars a person, you know, if we're gonna serve a thousand people, I don't know that I'm for spending a million dollars in a place. And so I do think as we're looking through this subgroup, one is jumping out to me that doesn't serve many people. And so I just think I would want to be sort of conscious of that. Not that the match isn't really strong, but I do think we have a, an incumbency to, to try to serve as many people as we can. And several of these serve lots and lots of people.
So, but. And you certainly have that flexibility to take those under consideration and look at others that may also be really good projects. And there may be other really good projects with, that are maybe not quite as high a match, but maybe it meets your priority needs as far as what you think our criteria is. And you may want to switch one out for the other and then see where the math lands out, which could totally change your final list. But I did want to give you all at least what that top 22 looked like and then move from, move from there.
Ricky, do you have a count of how many projects don't have any match?
It's quite a few. While they talk, I can look and see how many it is total.
Going back to what Bill's comment was initially starting that conversation, you know, we, we've got that match. It's certainly a good start. As one, I hate to use the word eliminator, but that's one that we should probably start with. And then as Ricky counts those that don't have a match, that certainly would be an eliminator as, as, as ones that don't qualify.
Well, it would at least de-prioritize.
That's right. And then, then we, we, once we, once we get a group that we can work with, then we have a second review or we have a second list that's moving forward for additional funding at a later date. Then they can re-qualify or whatever.
I'm seeing about 28 or 29 or 30 projects that have no match.
Yeah. So if we went through and found the ones that don't meet the criteria, eliminate those. And then we table all the ones that have zero matches. And then maybe I'll do our ratings on all the ones with the matches, you know, do something like that. And, you know, as we go through and we can say submit for approval or don't submit for approval. And then, you know, if you get over $10 million, submit for approval, then we kind of have to go back through the process and eliminate whatever we need to eliminate. You know, and if you don't have your 10 million, then we could, the ones we table could go to our next deadline and be included with those. Or, you know, some kind of system like that.
I think that is something y'all will want to consider is, given the influx of this many applications, and I, I think it's obvious that we've got well over $10 million worth that are good projects that meet the criteria. Do you even consider going to a second application period at this point?
I don't think we'd make that decision until we've gone through this. But yeah, I for sure would say if we spend the money, we wouldn't do another application process. But, you know, I think we, well, the board has, you know, we haven't reviewed them. So, you know, I think we have to review them first before determining whether we would do that or not.
You, you basically would, if you spent $9.6 million now, you would just.
Carry over.
Carry over all the applications until hopefully more funding came forth.
And then obviously we need to incumbent on us, I would think, to tell the applicant why they've been de-prioritized. First, since they don't have a match, that's why they've not gotten any farther along the process so that they can improve their application process perhaps.
Well, we carry them over, but we, if we're gonna be months, months away from next time we get together to do this, will we not have to do another application or?
And that's, that's the thing we got to decide.
Things change. I guess you could say, give them the option to change the application or to stay with the one they submitted.
Well, you know, this thing is new to everybody, us included, applicants included. And, I mean, if there's a way to do it, to give the applicant some feedback, you know, as, as to, you know, it may take a month to do that, but if they got some feedback, then they would, I think it would be a more positive experience for them. Okay, I've got to work on this and I got to work on this. And we're help, you know, hopefully helping them to understand the process we're trying to figure out right now. And.
Well, we're all going to score them, right?
It might be fair.
Except if they're disqualified. So why don't we, when we get through scoring them and we decide who's going to get there, and then we just say each of us put our reason for the, with what they think they need to improve or why they didn't stack up. And we don't even need to discuss it that much. Maybe when you get them all together, you have six reasons here for this one and two for this one, one for this one. And Ricky compiles that, then we send it out to the other trustees and we go through and then we might say, wait, wait a minute, I don't think we ought to tell them that. But just so we approve it before it goes after them. But I think the feedback would be helpful.
Why would it be wrong to just give them the average score on how?
They may not know what to do to improve it. If you, if, well, I always try, if I were doing it, if I were making an application and spent a lot of time doing it, and I was hopeful maybe that it would get some attention and it didn't, and all I got was an average score, I am, I don't even know if they're familiar with the scoring system. Number one, I think we ought to be able to tell them where you really came up short, were these four areas, five areas?
Well, I mean, one of the questions that nobody has answered virtually, maybe three or four is documented public support. I don't know if y'all have noticed.
That's right.
I mean, I'm putting a zero. There's nothing there. It's a zero.
Primary. That, that should be primary.
It, it should. That's why it's on the score sheet. So when they see a zero there, they're going away. I, I want to get those 10 points because it is, it's 10 points.
We don't even know if they got the score sheet.
They don't.
So we need to be able to tell them that.
That's what I'm saying. If we gave them a score sheet and they showed, they saw a zero and documented public support, they would go, about give me some.
That's pretty good. See, we cut down on the time too. If we gave them, we don't mind giving them a score sheet and just say, your, your score was, or your, this is how you stacked up. They can figure it out themselves.
Well, and we, we could put that on the website. I mean, is, is it a big secret? The score sheet? Is that asking for trouble?
Well, the score, there's not, there's not going to be one score sheet. There's going to be one average.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying what the format is.
He's saying the blank template that's like the.
Exactly.
All right. So that, that is.
35 points for a match.
Okay. So the scoring criteria is on the website, but it doesn't show what the weighted portion of each question is, if that's what you're talking about.
But the weighted portion is the answers to the test. That's what they need to really know.
Send that to them with their explanation why they didn't score as high as they did.
Good. Yeah.
And then that going forward, they could come back. Back up one, one, one point before we get to that point. Are we going to keep those applications valid going forward? Does MDA do that? No Soil Conservation Service does. If you, there's not enough funding and they're ranked one through 25 and they only funded 15, those move to the top of the list, the next funding cycle. Do we keep those in that place that are approved? They just didn't score as high as the ones we did approve of the money we had? Or do we make it start all over?
Everything changes. So, but next funding cycle, that's six months. Something in that application surely has changed.
Yeah.
I, I would think. I would think they'd want to reapply. I, I would think.
I agree. Their maps could change, you know.
Right.
Public support could go, could go better or worse.
They have accessible property. The dynamics are more likely that they have changed than in the following application period. So, and they've learned a lot by that first application. So the second application should be, you know, not as intimidating for, but I kind of lean towards.
Start over.
Well, I guess I always thought, but you know, we're kind of developing it as we go. But I always thought that the applications that came in for this round would get processed. And then when the next round opened, whatever that is, July 1st, everything starts all over again. I mean, if not, you're going to end up with this.
Perpetual stack.
Exactly. That you'll never be able to rectify.
Yeah, I agree. And if they want, you know, if they don't have any changes, all they've got to do is resubmit the same thing. It wouldn't be that hard. So.
It, it makes it a lot cleaner on my side of the world that they just, you have to purge them and let them resubmit and they're all new applications being received at one time.
Okay. And that, that makes it simple.
Well, they also certify, if somebody signs on there, says I certify or agree or I'm stating that this information is correct. And if it's a year old, they're not even, I think they resubmit.
Start over and you're going to send them the score sheet.
I agree. And I guess the question is, is if we fast forward a couple of years and we're at 10 million, possibly get 20 million to spend in this coming session, then we get another 10 or 20 next year. That's a lot of projects for Ricky to have to, to track ongoing, much less future concerns. I mean, my gut on what we owe applicants. I think, I think it's fair to give them their score. I think that's a reasonable thing in the score sheet. But for them, for us to tell them exactly what they did wrong without asking for that information, I, I personally wouldn't be for putting that on Ricky. I think if, if X county calls and says, hey, I'm sorry, I scored, I scored a 75. I think if, if, um, X county calls and says, hey, I'm sorry, I scored, I scored a seventy-five or whatever it is. Can you help me understand why I did not do that? Well, I think you should tell them and try to help them. But I don't know that we ought to volunteer that information because otherwise. That's a hundred and five responses that he has to make just on this one round. It's gonna compound a lot. So that's just my, my two cents on it.
Reach out to Georgia and find that one. That, that might, they might have, uh. They've done this probably three times now.
Yeah. Let me ask you this, because if we don't, whatever we withhold or don't give them, I'm, I'm like you, Joe. The more information you give them, the more create opportunity for conflict and disagreement and everything else. But what they're gonna do, they're gonna call you and, and, and your fellows and say, look, you know, what happened here? Why didn't I get that? So, what you're feeling about?
Well, I've already considered the political ratification, you know, that, that, you know, uh. That town walling may call, you know, the Pro River Water and say, what, what didn't we do or what did you do better? Or who was your representative that, you know, so it could get political. That's what we don't want. We'll make sure that we don't keep proprietary information to that applicant and only that applicant. Because I don't want somebody asking, well, how did they qualify? What did they do to get a better application? That's proprietary to them. If not, then it becomes really.
Sticking with the higher match, uh, scoring projects along with which ones scored the highest. In combination with those two criteria, kind of keeps you out of that realm. We're, we're looking at the best ones. And, uh, like I say, you can obviously take some out of there and say, well, this one compares with another one. That didn't quite make the twenty-two list, but it's also a very good project. And it scored whatever the average is, and you may want to reconsider moving some of that around. I think, I think that's what you should do, is look at the others that, that may be good projects as well. And consider where they need to be jumbled around.
But if you think about it, the match is only one third. So that means those other projects, two thirds of what they would be scored on are relevant.
And it's only thirty-five points of two hundred and fifty-five total points.
Exactly.
And we didn't tell them that it's all about the matches there. Unlike Joe, I think there's some things on there that was a little bit of money. With no match, but it impacted a heck of a lot of people. And it doesn't hurt our budget much. I'd be for some of those.
Yeah, see, we hadn't looked at it yet, but when we put those ones that are qualified, those that have the match, they didn't have a score. This might change a little bit because you got a score added to it.
That's right.
That's right.
And so, so it really can't.
When you get down to it, that's really the mission of this bill.
Yeah.
When you break down what the purpose of this bill was, to touch more people with this. Get as much match as we can, but touch as many people.
That's right.
I, I'm with Matt. I've seen some forty, fifty thousand dollar projects that are, I'm like, man, this is what this thing's about right here.
Because at the end of the day, when we all, when we're through and it's all announced, we want your funds a lot of. What a great thing y'all did when you passed this. These three projects affected me and my family or my group. And that, that's what we hope happens so that everybody's excited about it.
I'll catch you on speed dial.
It will, it will take some time if we want to, uh. Contact individually each applicant that does not ultimately get approved. That will take some time. That's something I would probably want to put on the back burner, uh, because we're trying to get. Get to the point of making decisions and getting money out, uh, and then maybe go back and, uh, touch base with some of these folks. Because, uh, unfortunately, the application itself, uh, as it was developed. Did not send out, you know, an email notification, let it know that it, the application was received. Uh, we're working on that. Uh, obviously, when the application was first developed, uh, we didn't have any staff in place. Uh, and so it was bare bones application so people could apply. But we're working on that, making some improvements to the application process. Uh, and Preston and I are working on making a little bullet list, uh, for the next round, uh, for the developers to get that done. But we'll, we'll make some of that easier in the next round. Do you have any advice as far as contacting them and giving them that type of information?
I think just come up with a form letter and let them know, uh, and if they have further questions, please feel free to contact me.
Okay.
You're not gonna return, you're just gonna, the application's going into the file. Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
No second review on any of that?
So unapproved applications, um. Assuming that we use all the dedicated funding that's here, I don't want to use that term dedicated funding, but all the funds that are available. Uh, then we will not have a second, second application period and we will not table those to the second application period as well. We'll start back over, brand new.
Now, might be a good idea if you go write that in a letter to them. When that next application.
Absolutely. That's what I was just getting you saying. We need to say we, we enter, you know.
And you won't, you won't know that until we get additional funding.
Let me get the, let me, let me cash the check first.
Well, we, we probably won't be ready to write that letter to everyone.
Within the next couple of weeks, we'll have this nailed down.
And you need to think about when you want that cycle to start. How long you want to stay open? We were open. Months, months?
Weeks.
And I would, I would say a lot of that will depend on how this process is going. Because once we make the decisions and then we start with the actual dispersing of money. And getting the approved applicants to get back with us and make all those connections, that's gonna be a very busy time. Uh, and I would not want to mix bringing in new applications in the middle of all that. So, uh.
Well, again, this first round runs guns somewhat because of the time rotation and the time. Yeah, we got a full year coming up. Right. So now, you know, we get your new funding July one, you've got the time to do. You don't have to do a sixty, you don't have to do a thirty day application period. You can do it wherever you want.
Right, right.
Shorter the period, the harder it's gonna be for us. Go back to Georgia and see what they did.
Sure. I know Georgia, their application period is kind of like a two-tier deal. There's an initial application period. Once the, their board makes the decisions about that initial application. Those applicants have to submit an additional application with more information, more details. Uh, before they are finally granted a final approval.
That's right. It is a tiered application. So.
Might get there somehow. What else we need to do? You gotta, you gotta eliminate the ones that don't qualify.
And send us a list.
Send us a new list.
I'm gonna remove the ones with zero match. I'm gonna remove the apps that do not qualify. And then I'll, uh. Send you a new list of, uh, which, what those applications are.
Can you leave them in the received order? Because like the way I, I've just been starting at the top, regardless, I've never. I'm just, I would never keep up with what's left.
Yeah, I can. In fact.
I thought we weren't gonna eliminate the ones with zero match. Yeah, we were gonna look at that because there were some of them that may not have a match but be certifiable.
Yeah. If we only remove the ones that don't qualify, you're only gonna be moving a few. When you really get down to does not qualify, and I, and I'd like to make that point. Is that when you look at the points of the criteria in the bill, just because, um. Just because the nature of what their request is, uh, it might be a ball field, a tennis court. Uh, it might be, um, additions to improvements to something that's already in place. It may be improvements to something that meets our criteria. There may be a park complex there that is very much outdoor recreation. It has the trails, it has some type of nature education involvement. But now they just need to add this to it. They need to add this to it. That in itself may not look too attractive unless you look at the overall project. And so it's hard for me to take someone's application when they were only adding, say bathrooms. They were only adding parking spaces, uh, to an area. Uh, it's hard for me to say, well, that doesn't qualify. Uh, I just about gotta leave that up to y'all to kind of look at it as an overall scope. Does it meet the criteria? Is there, you know, they're asking for something, but their overall project has maybe already been established. And they're just adding to it. Does that make sense?
In other words, it's more, it may just be maintenance.
Right. I mean, uh, for instance, someone may be just asking for lighting. There's no lighting there already and they need to add that to already very good project. That meets all the criteria that's in the bill. They only need to add parking space. I don't know. Those are, those are the kinds of things that could be coming through.
And what I was talking about is, you said you're gonna take out the ones that had no match. But I thought we said we're gonna consider the ones with no match. If they, it was a really good project with a little bit of money that impacted a heck of a lot of people.
You can.
I agree with Matt. Uh, some of these smaller projects may be really good and they may not have a match attached to them. So I think we should look at them and at least score them.
Well, but if you, all the things you just mentioned. Lighting, bathrooms, different things, playground equipment. I mean, there's a lot of that that I'm seeing. And I've, I've scored sixty-three so far. So, um, they're not gonna score good. Under the criteria, like, you know, the materials, you know, there's a lot of walking paths. There's some that are gonna get repaved with asphalt. Well, you know, that doesn't count under the way we score right now. It's green infrastructure. That's right. So those type things, the way we've done the score sheet. I would think it would be very hard for a lighting project and a playground project to succeed. I'm just.
And the, and the ball fields and the soccer fields and the playground was not the intent.
No.
I think we drew a really slippery slope if we, if we do.
I think that's all you're gonna fund. Because there's so much on it.
Category to eliminate, that's the category to eliminate, I think.
Well, well, you know, we're a conservation based, uh, fund. That's, uh, outdoor and recreation, conservation based. And so watershed lake has got to be implemented, create a ball field or walking trails or ten. It's more, it's, if that work's already been done and they need a bathroom to enhance the project. And that's what you're saying. The overall project was a conservation project that's enhanced by. Whatever municipal sports thing they have, then I understand what you're saying. In and of itself, it doesn't look like a conservation project, but it is. That's what you're trying to say. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
And in my opinion, as, as bad as I would hate. For everyone to have to spend all the time it takes to go over a hundred and five applications and score them. That scoring criteria really is helpful if we do it for everybody. If everybody gets a score and we compare that score with which ones have the best matches. And then you have those, those two lists to make your decisions on, rather than letting me be the one to decide. Well, that's really not a good project and throw it out.
And just to be clear, Ricky can't make those decisions. Ricky can't.
Yeah.
That, that's the board's responsibilities to make the action. Ricky can make recommendations, but he can't make any decisions.
And, and myself, I'm, I'm in the same boat. I don't make decisions, but then, you know, recommendations. And Ricky and I talked the other day about, you know, do we really want to get into it? And this opening round of applications include ball fields? Or is there something will come down the road? I, I think that it's a slippery slope if we want to set that precedent, this is what we're gonna do. This is what our fund's about. Then it's gonna open up doors, handle a box stuff so much that we may not want to open that door just yet.
Which to the point, which to the point, number of really good conservation minded. Applications are there that will burn up easily ten million dollars. And I think with that in mind, those should certainly get. It'd be my recommendation that those get the most attention and consideration to be funded. Not to say that any of the others, if they ever come back and apply again, that they wouldn't. But we're starting out of the gate. We want, we want to stick to what our legislature has provided us as a criteria. I think it's responsible for us to do that.
Yeah, then say playground, just play, say ball fields, this, a group of things are like.
Yes.
Activities. I think we, I'm, I'm with you on that. I think we need to stay with that.
And if it takes us two more weeks for everybody to get all the score sheets done, so be it.
Hey, as this evolves, if we find that that's a big part of this project, this, this component for our, outdoor recreation, then we'll expand that request. You know, down the road. But right now, we're focused on outdoor stewardship. And, uh, I think we want to stay focused on that mission. We can expand that mission if we see there's just overall need for it.
Which is what we all thought it was gonna be about when we agreed to do it anyway.
I've read the bill. I don't see where it talks about baseball, so you don't see lighting and things like that. I'm, I'm, I'm going back and read that bill four or five times to try to score things. But I think we have to be careful too, that I think there needs to be a review of an application when it comes in. Because I mean, I've seen, there's an application in there. It's asking for over a million dollars. There's no match. There's no budget. There's no, no, I mean, you know. We're, we're, where, where's that money going? I mean, what, what, how could? That shouldn't even get to a point to where it needs to score in my mind.
I think that could be considered an incomplete application.
It's exact, exactly what I'm saying. We don't have enough information to score, to consider this project.
And that's something that.
And it shouldn't have to get to the board level to do that.
That's something that Ricky can reach out to them, send them a letter and say, we're sorry, this is an incomplete application. You know, please reapply. And then that, leave it at that.
There's. Then you have others that got three to one match.
Yeah.
It's John Wallen. It's, you know, it's huge.
But it's ball fields.
There's, actually, there's a component of ball fields there. Outdoor recreation part.
Yeah, and again, learning process, we can, um. We can try and do that on my end as they come in, the initial review. There's obviously omissions like audits, budgets, cover letter, program narrative. All these things, I mean, those, those kinds of things, uh, without having them sitting in the room with you to explain it. Then you have no way of knowing.
There's, there's one in there to sit down. We'll get an audit if we need it or we have an audit. And it's two, you know, we can't wait on that.
Right, and.
Incomplete.
And with our amount of staffing, I can't handle all this and keep going back and forth with them saying. I can tell them, your application was incomplete, so it's not gonna be considered. You'll be able to replay our next time.
It, it, that's, that's the answer right there. But, you know, i- it's. There's a lot of incompleteness in, in this. And, and we're figuring this out. Nobody's done anything wrong. We're, we're just kind of working our way through this thing. But, oh, it, it's, I mean, there's some situations in there that, you know, just. I mean, I've got a, I've got a project that scored twenty-two. Oh, i- it's, I mean, there's some situations in there that, you know, just, I mean, I've got a, I've got a project that scored twenty-two. I got another project scored two hundred and thirty, you know, it's a big swing.
Now. I could take enough time to go through and do this, and do an evaluation of these. And I could try and find incomplete applications, I mean, if it's, if it is obviously incomplete. Take those off the list. Regardless of what their matches, and I think that's the way you ought to handle it.
I think you have to, I think you have to, and if you could just take that master list, cause I'm, I'm with, I'm with Joe, I've been, I've been going in order. You shuffle the deck.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what am I, if you just draw, if you just leave them on there, draw a line through them or something on that list. And then, you know, then we've got a record of it everything, but.
Okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna take incomplete, the ones that had the match. What was the other criteria we were talking about, we don't score all of those?
We'll remove incomplete applications and then. If it doesn't qualify, there's, there's very few of those that just. Plainly don't qualify, um, and then. We'll let y'alls score sheets reflect the rest. I'll get the list to you as quick as I can on those that are incomplete. And I'll do like you suggested, I'll just take this spreadsheet, I'll do a strikeout. If they have an incomplete application, and then you know which ones to.
Keep the order, please.
I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's easier for me too.
Yeah. But, you know, we've been talking about a lot of negative today, but let me tell you what, there's some exciting projects that are, it is really serious. I mean, w- we just gotta find some more money. Because there's some great things to be done and, and really good matches, great ideas, it's, it's. It's gonna be very successful.
We're committed to more money.
And I think, I think that'll happen. Hopefully it will. Okay, um, you're gonna rescind that and we'll get on the scoring aspect of that. We need a deadline. The future, that we'll have everything scored and then we can make a selection by a certain time. Now, it's kind of hard to do that when we hadn't scored them, but. Let's make this further enough out in the future than we, we can make it happen, so what, what do you think, Ricky?
Give me a couple of days to get through the list of removing incomplete applications. I think. If you, you individually as board members have, I know you do, you still have apps left to score. I think you can thumb through those and you'll kind of see yourself that they're incomplete. If it's incomplete, just move on to the next one. And you'll see those that are obviously good applications, they're fairly complete. Go ahead and score those, that'll keep you from wasting a lot of time and chances are. The ones that you see are incomplete are the same ones I'm gonna remove as well.
What do you think you'll have us, do you have any idea?
Give me a couple of days, I, I should have it to you by Wednesday. Sometime Wednesday.
Would, would. Setting a date, Bill, you're, this is more your, your area than ours, we set a date to have this completed. By June the first or June thirty is, is the funding cycle, is that gonna be a problem?
Um, no, I, I would like to provide, uh. Probably the chair's, uh, product report though, in the next week, just kind of stats report. Uh, so we can share with Gilbert, Neil. But if we can get a report issued to the, to two chairs, I think that will help if we start signing appropriations. Just to let them know what our status report is, what we've done, kind of just overview of applications.
I know it makes seem like it's kind of, that we wanna give dates and all, but it also, also helps too if we just. Let our progress determine when we start setting some dates, if we, um. If I can get this list to you by Wednesday, that may help you in your scoring. And if you get all your scored sheets to me by first of next week, middle of next week. Then, all I need is a day to get all that entered and I can have the averages for each project pretty quick. And get that back to you and then we can look at how they rank by score. And we can look at how they rank by match and have those two rankings side by side. Then let y'all start making some decisions.
Ricky, the only comment that I have is the, the amount of the match is already included in the score. So if they have a big match, they should automatically score higher, I don't know why.
They should. Um, there are probably some of those that have a good match, but aren't going to score well otherwise. May have a good match, but it doesn't meet a lot of the other criteria.
And the score will show up there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I say if you, then you can look at them side by side. How much match did it have and how did it score, ranking wise?
I mean, if I'm, if I'm reading the list right, there's a hundred and twenty-one million dollars worth of projects.
Yes.
And they're asking for fifty thousand dollars, fifty million dollars. That, that's a pretty good statistic there, Mr. Chairman.
There is.
In the first six months.
Again, you know, my, from my standpoint, just making Josh Harkins feel comfortable and Delbert Oden feel uncomfortable. When they sit down appropriations, um, and I think everybody is comfortable, I don't mean to say they're not. Just a little stats report on where we're at, what we're doing, going into our next funding cycle, I think would be critical.
We have to, we're supposed to make a report to those committees, that's the statute. We, we now actually need to do that.
And we're, we're a good bit of the ways as far as making a report, the, the next bit is having a ranking and making some decisions.
So do, do we come up with a timeline?
No, I'm talking about the final one, you know, like June or something for decision, but it's gonna take us some time to score this. But if we don't have a, a time frame in front of us, we won't get to that time frame.
I'd like to ask y'all, how, how much more time do you think you need just to get the score sheets done? I know we're gonna be removing some, but do you need a week, do you need two weeks?
I'd need closer to two weeks probably because of travel schedules and everything else.
Yeah, it, it's gonna take several meetings or a long meeting to work our way through this individual. Funding, so I would think.
What I would suggest all of you, all of the board members come perhaps with the projects that you want funded. And know what you're going, how you're going to vote. So that, you know, the discussion can be.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you're not, or, you know, if you really go strongly, you know, but.
Opinion.
I would just have, have. An opinion in your mind.
It's gonna take a meeting or two to get through all those.
I'm doing my score sheets handwritten, I'm sure we're doing them all different than the ones that I feel good about, I'm just doing a star in the corner.
Under handwritten.
You know, so, cause, cause I, some of these I've scored, you know, a few weeks ago and. I'm gonna need some reminding when I look back at the score sheets, that's just a little trick I'm doing. Maybe worth it, y'all, when you're in the moment, say, I think this is worth, I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent in, but hey, this is one I strongly.
Twenty-two, I've just got a match, it takes. And have discussion.
We wanna try to set the dates, that's gonna be an in-person meeting, obviously. So we wanna try to set when those are gonna be.
I would suggest perhaps waiting until you get all, until Ricky lets everybody know that the scores are in and then you can set a date to. Schedule it.
Yeah, my question to Bill was just, do we need to do this sooner than later in that funding cycle? By the time the end of the period is here.
You know, we're gonna make a, a decision on appropriations here in the next ten days, two weeks. I, you have a report, you say you had required issue report.
I can make a report.
Um, so I think that's really the only thing that I would. I'd work on, but I wouldn't worry about the score sheet, where you're at, just give a report on where you're at, what we're doing. You know, the top twenty-two projects for nine point six million and, uh. You know, the success you've had, and let it be, let it be that. I'm not concerned about the situation in this program. Certainly, we need to June or July to do that, so be it. Moving forward, again. We get a refunding in July, then we wanna have a, an October or November period then. You know, it kind of, you don't have to do everything in such rapid fashion. Here or so, ninety days.
I just hate to set a date for anything that we know will probably wind up having to change, so. If, if we know that the next most important thing is, is working on these score sheets. Getting them summarized for you to make your evaluations, make your decision, that's the next thing we need to do, as soon as we get that done. Then we can start with, when's the board meeting gonna be that we're gonna sit and meet and discuss yea or nay? After we get that done, it's gonna move pretty quickly.
These guys gotta go through that motion, so whatever time it takes is what it takes.
Yeah.
But I, I do think it would be valuable for the people that Mr. Kincaid has mentioned. See that we had a hundred and five applications and it was.
We got that information now.
You know, the big, big picture numbers too, that nine point six is just gonna get a sliver of what. People are interested in.
Yeah, I got enough to report on right there.
Absolutely, and this, this tells a lot of story too, you know, this balance, so, this tells me a lot.
Well, why don't we, why don't we work with this, run out here, summary of what we've got on the table. To be funded, just looked at, let's get a report to the legislature. And then you'll get that off, whoever needs to get it to, whoever needs to, yeah, we'll work on score. And then we'll probably disperse some of these meetings for a few weeks. Score.
Yeah, I'd rather, at this point, I'd rather y'all spend the day scoring sheets than traveling here or waiting to have another meeting.
So it's the sixth of March, we reconvene first Monday of April.
I would suggest not even setting a date yet, until it's.
Till everybody's done.
Till everybody's done.
That makes sense.
Kind of cleared your calendar to be, don't set anything on the first Monday of April.
We'll, Ricky and I'll follow back up with C R, he'll let me know when you're not doing something, so. We'll follow back up when everybody's got it done.
Man, that's turkey hen.
I was gonna say, March fifteenth.
For a week, March twentieth.
Till May first.
May first, May first, three fifteen, May first.
Okay, I'm not a turkey hunter, but I, I am, I am conscious of. Okay, I'm good with everybody? Ricky, you're gonna eliminate the ones you can. Resubmit us out to those for us to be scored.
And when are we really encouraging to have them done by if we can't? Well, uh. Two weeks from today is the twentieth.
Let's shoot for that. Let's get the monkey off our back.
Yeah, sooner we get through with it, better off.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, let's try it two weeks.
Set it for the twenty-seventh, we'll wait till the twentieth.
Yeah, you'll be just like an applicant, you'll wait till the last minute.
That's right.
Ricky, I have one little like clarification request on this spreadsheet. And, and it, it kind of says it, but I just don't know the type of all these programs. Matt Source, you did a really good job of listing specifically what it's from, would you put local, state, federal or local, like. Local, state, federal also in there? In some places you do, sometimes you call the.
Sometimes I don't know myself.
And if you don't know, it's.
And that, that is actually in the spreadsheet exactly the way it came.
No, I understand, and it's, cause to me, if we're.
Now, for me, I know that miss with is federal, you know, uh, I know some of those acronyms are federal, y'all may not.
Yeah.
Um, if it's a local match or like, uh, city funds match, I put that.
Right, I guess my thought is if there's a match that is other state dollars. That kind of in my mind dilutes the value of that match a little bit, because it's all kind, kind of coming from the same place, even though it's from program A, program B. And that may, as this becomes increasingly competitive, that may be a differentiator. Cause I think the initial impetus for this, certainly in Georgia, was federal dollars, you know? So, um, anyways, I may be the only one that's interested in it, but I'd like to see it that way, if nobody's opposed to that.
If, where you can. If I can confidently tell you one way or the other, I will, how about that?
No, it's fair, it's very fair, thank you.
Alright.
What else can we do for you?
I think that's it, that's, that's the main thing, is getting through this next task. I feel like we can grab another gear after we get all the score sheets in and get, get something for you to.
Just a question as I was going through scoring these things, when we ask them if there's a match. Do we bear, do we ask for any backup, do we, I mean, they say I got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but. Do they? I mean, if, if we use that criteria to award them money and then. It becomes a no match.
I'd have to go back and look at the application, there's probably a, a caveat in there that. I certify that all information.
They do that, they do have to stand in front of them.
Yes, I don't know if we request them to show proof, but there is language.
That will, that will probably come as soon as we get to the point of dispersing funds and all the.
You've got to prove to us.
Yes.
Before, okay, alright, I just wanna make sure we're covered to make sure.
There's, there's another process and procedure going forward to.
Yeah, because.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to have a grant agreement, right, with each, each person and that, and I'm assuming that would be an exhibit.
Just because the board has approved a project, doesn't mean they're getting the money. They gotta go through the process with D F A to file through all the other, uh, processes. And get information back to D F A, once they have done that and satisfied them, then some funds can be transferred.
Whether they use their grant money or their matching money first and then ours is last, we gotta decide that, whether we're doing a reimbursement. As well. We talked about that earlier.
It won't be a reimbursement, from my understanding, it's gonna be a complete, uh, it'd be a one check payment. After they have met the criteria that D F A has.
I thought we talked about doing reimbursement. Quite certain we did.
Where work done, work complete.
Yeah, they, they could use their money and then we'd reimburse them.
Yeah.
That's the safest way to do it.
I mean, I, I don't know if that's gonna matter in how the, the money is. Provided to the applicant.
So we give them a half billion dollars and then never build the project?
Oh, no, there, there's a count, there'll be, a- a- after that, they have to provide quarterly reports.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of agencies that require you to use your money, they know you're reimbursing.
I mean, that, and that can be done, but I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty normal.
They're gonna have to show their work and that's, that's part of the.
I'm a no, I'm a no on writing checkups, Ron.
Yeah, that's, that's a, we better, we better, we'll work on, we have time to work on it.
I think there's a lot of questions, it said reimbursement in the application for, uh, a grant. Yeah, one of the questions.
One of the questions is what?
On the application, I thought it said, uh, grant or reimbursement of funds and the applicants select what they want to desire.
I know what I'd select, if that's the choice.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's something that she should consider when providing, I think it maybe is the. What, what, what it is, you know?
And I, I don't think that's how we select the project, but it is, it's how we manage the project or manage the funds.
But they have to, whether it's a reimbursement or a, um, grant, they're still gonna have to provide quarterly statements.
So probably a, like.
Yeah.
Issue. Yeah. Okay, we'll work through that. We'll work through that later on. What else? Yep. Okay. I think that's all the old business. Do we have any new business? I guess that was new business too, what?
Yeah, that wasn't new.
Yeah, so. Anything else? Someone? Ladies? Anything we're missing? Bill? All right. We'll suspend the meetings until April or somewhere thereabout and we'll get in touch with you on that date. Let you know.
Targeted meetings, correct?
That's right. We'll work on score, get that behind us and, uh, spend our time on that and we'll get back together. As y'all score those things, you come up with ideas and processes and things that we need to work on, just hear about it. Just know what we need to do. Input's good. That's why you're on here. Help us get through this, so. Shoot it, shoot Ricky or I, we'll, we'll disperse. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Motion by Joe and, um, Matt. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank y'all. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.